Recording in progress.
Great, if I could call to order the September 8th, 2022 Louisville Planning Commission Meeting with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Osterman? Here. Commissioner Deal?
Here.
Chair Braunice?
Here.
Commissioner Moline?
Here.
Commissioner Krantz?
Here.
Commissioner Howe?
Here.
Thank you all very much. Would like to move then to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none? Carries? Then we'd like to look at the minutes of our August 11th, 2022 meeting. I believe we have some corrections to make. Actually, let's pause for just, there we go. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, I do have a couple corrections.
Great, thanks.
On page nine, under where Zuccaro said, "This plan does have a sustainability commitment plan," that should read, "This plan does not have a sustainability commitment plan." And then on page 11, I said, "In the transportation analysis for the previous development, there was a 12% transportation goal and a 25% goal for land management." That is incorrect. It should say, "In the transportation memo, there was a 12% non-SOV goal, and this is not consistent with the traffic and mobility study that mentioned a 25% goal." So I was wondering if we could change that one, those two items.
Thank you very much. Any additional corrections, changes to the minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve with the corrections as stated.
So moved, second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we don't have any abstention? I believe you have one abstention?
Abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Osterman. All right, with that then, we open it up initially for public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If there was something that you wanted to speak to that's not about this evening's agenda, if you've filled out a card, I believe we have it up here, welcome. If you can, we'll ask you to fill out a card afterwards, that's fine. If you can come up, if you wanted to speak for something that's not on the agenda, you can come up to the podium, please, and introduce yourself, name and address, please. Whoops, sorry, there's a button at the base of the microphone to press. Great, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect.
My name is Catherine Smith, and I live at 608 West Street in Louisville. And the item that I wanted to talk to you about that's not on the agenda is about the public comment process and public involvement. And in particular, when there are nuanced, sophisticated issues before the commission, the public is really, I think, quite challenged. We are limited to three minutes. We're not allowed to pool our time. And we don't have a way to guarantee that we speak in any order. In contrast, the applicant gets unlimited time before the commission. And that's not to criticize the process and to say that they shouldn't get unlimited time, but the public doesn't really get an opportunity to say things that are coherent when we're dealing with issues of the complexity that we're dealing with, with the Redtail Ridge application. And so I'm an advocate for a process that looks different than today's process. And rather than just being the sort of naysayer, if you're looking for someone from the community to participate in the process, I put my name in the hat. I think there are ways to get very valuable feedback from the public, and I think that the current process really just hasn't done justice to the community's involvement. And I see a bunch of people nodding, so I'm hoping that means that there's some kind of momentum behind my comment. And thank you.
Great, well, thank you for bringing that up. It's the first time it's been brought up in at least 12 years. So I appreciate the desire to have kind of a different angle on it, so yeah, we will certainly continue the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I do have a thought that there might be a tiering, because I don't, I think that the complexity of the issues that comes before the commission really varies. And so you might not want to have like a one-size-fits-all approach, where there's a process for really extended engagement for every issue that comes before the Planning Commission, but certainly on the larger, more complex issues, that's kind of where my push would be, to get something that really gives the community at least a process where we feel like we can dig in and say something that's really cohesive and coherent.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. All right, with that then, we will move in.
There's one hand raised.
Sorry, what's that?
There is one hand raised online.
Online for a public comment, all right. If we can recognize them. Mr. Herring? No?
Yep.
Hand down. Hand up, there we go. Mr. Harrington?
Good evening, R.J. Harrington, 457 East Rain Tree Court here in Louisville. To build on the process piece a little bit, the link for the computer login on the Planning Commission page forces one to download a calendar invite, then using that gets the Zoom login. I would suggest either making it transparent that it is a Zoom login, or create that computer login link to just go straight to Zoom. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for your comments. All right. All right, with that then, we'll move into our continued business, the preliminary and final plat on Redtail Ridge. I believe we're going to begin with staff presentation. Director Zuccaro?
Yes, good evening, Chair Braunice, members of the commission.
Yeah, so, but then also, let me read, I'll read the whole script I have here, sorry. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a preliminary and final plat for Redtail Ridge. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the Planning Commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the Planning Staff, Planning Commission to staff. Now, at our August meeting, we had the majority of that. We may have some additional questions today, but then we'll begin with next, we'll have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone or in person may speak regarding the application. Anyone who'd like to speak is encouraged to fill out, if you're in person, to fill out a comment card and turn it in to staff. And if you would like to speak when you're online, please use the raise hand function if you're participating by computer, or star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The Planning Commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, table, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none. Do we have notification?
Yes, Chair. This was continued from the August 11th meeting. There was proper notification for the August 11th meeting. It was continued to a date certain, so that notice has continued to be met.
Thank you very much. Do we have any Planning Commission disclosures? Commissioner Krantz, please.
Yes, I'd like to disclose that I was not present at the last meeting on August 11th. However, I did review the video recording, I reviewed the packet, and so I'm up to speed with all the evidence that was presented.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, now we're there, there we go. Director Zuccaro, please.
Good, yes, so as you all know, staff did provide a memo that answered the questions that we heard at the last meeting. We've received a couple other additional commissioner questions that I'm going to go over briefly with this presentation. There were two addendums with additional public comment. They are posted on the website with the packet, and there's paper copies up here as well for anybody in the audience participating. So I'm going to start with explaining a little bit about the process on this slide. There were some questions about the referendum last year and how that, the city charter could impact this application, so I wanted to provide some clarity on that. So here on the slide, you can see at the bottom, there's the, some language from the city charter that says, "No referred ordinance repealed by the registered electors may be re-adopted by the council." So what that means is if there's a zoning ordinance or a general development plan approval, which are approved by ordinance, if those are repealed, you can't re, nobody can propose that exact same ordinance or that exact same general development plan within a four-year period. You could propose a different plan. That is not what's before us. I have a summary of the process here, just generally the required steps in development. There is adoption of zoning on private, on property. It sometimes includes a general development plan if it is PCZD, Planned Community Zone District, or it could be straight zoned. Once a property has that zoning, which is adopted by ordinance, in order to develop the property, you have to go through a subdivision plat and a planned unit development approval. The difference is, is the zoning or the general development plan is adopted by ordinance. That's subject to referendum. A subdivision plat, which is the application before us this evening, is adopted by city council resolution. It is not subject to the city, it's not subject to referendum, and it does not violate the charter, because this is just the subdivision plat application. And they are requesting development under the 2010 general development plan, which was adopted by ordinance back in 2010. So hopefully that makes sense. If not, I can answer any questions about the process and why this is eligible for hearing. Certainly, the commission should be vetting this against the 2010 general development plan to make sure that they believe it conforms to that plan, as well as any other pertinent zoning or subdivision ordinances. So I'm going to go on, there was, to the fiscal analysis, there's a question about fiscal analysis and a request to run our fiscal model, and especially with the assumption that there's a hospital campus that is a nonprofit. So when we do have nonprofit development, they don't pay property tax, and they don't pay use tax on construction or furniture or those types of things. So we did run the model, taking a 435 square foot, 435,000 square foot hospital campus, assuming it was, all of that development was tax exempt. And we, and the result is, over a 20-year period, we would expect a positive net fiscal output. Our comprehensive plan policy for this district is that there needs to be a neutral fiscal outcome and a positive economic benefit. And so here's just a graph that we included in the staff report too, from our fiscal model, that shows revenue and expenditures over time. This dip here is a little interesting. We put it, because they're dedicating the park parcel, as you remember, but not building a park. We do have a capital park construction project modeled in year three, where if the city wanted to build a park, that's included in the model as well. There was a question about development restrictions on the public land dedication parcels. So staff discusses in the staff memo, the Northwest Parkway IGA, which does have language about a development buffer between these Paradise Lane properties that are in Boulder County and the development. That language says there needs to be a buffer. It doesn't say how big, how deep, or anything like that, but as we've discussed, this track C, part of the open space is intended to meet that buffer through that IGA. The Paradise Lane properties that are in Boulder County, that are now part of the public land dedication proposal, are also addressed through the IGA and an amendment to the IGA if they're annexed into the city, but there's no proposal for annexation into the city. Under the applicable IGA, development on these parcels is limited to one dwelling per four and a half acres. So I think they could get 10 dwellings if they developed that 47 acres. Those are the restrictions through the IGA.
Director Zuccaro?
Yes.
On that last slide, why is the Paradise Lane included in the dedication? I guess because it's not part of the parcel that's part of the plat?
Yeah, it depends, well, it is, it is a dedication for public use. And the way we describe it in the staff report is we, we describe it in multiple ways, depending on how the commission wants to see it. We describe it as land within the boundaries, total land. I would note that in the, with the 2010 general development plan, there was a PUD, which isn't fully relevant to this, but when ConocoPhillips was going to develop, part of their public land dedication included 20 acres of these properties as well. So at least in 2010, the city was considering 20 acres of this land to be part of the public dedication as well. The ordinance, I do believe, suggests it needs to be within the development, so you could look at it within the development as well, but it is a public land dedication. So there was a question about net public land dedication. So our ordinance does say that public land dedications, to meet the minimum at least, you are not supposed to consider any land encumbered by easements, including drainage easements and utility easements. So we did look at what utility easements, there's a utility easement on the west side, there's a ditch easement on the east side. If you net those out, there is drainage infrastructure in the public lands, but they're not covered by easements. So technically, by the ordinance, you may not have to deduct them, but just for the sake of understanding the encumbrance of the drainage, we measured the area around the 100-year floodplain. I would say that's a very conservative estimate. If you actually established easements over these properties, it probably wouldn't be that wide, but we did want to give a very conservative estimate of what's encumbered. And we're noting, you know, the minimums, and this is just a minimum. You know, the city does often get more than the minimum in public land dedications with developments. But we did a series of different calculations, netting out the easements, netting out the drainage areas. If you net out everything, there's 69 acres within the boundaries that are public land that aren't encumbered by easements or drainage, and then there's that 47 acres in Boulder County. So, you know, that's compared to the minimum within the code. There was several questions about traffic analysis. One was about the distribution. The, so this is the graphic that has the assumptions about traffic distribution. The majority is proposed to come off of US 36, most of it from the Denver direction instead of the Boulder direction. You know, there were a lot of discussions with the applicant's engineer and city engineering staff about these assumptions, and I think everybody felt comfortable that this is what we would expect. It is largely a highway-oriented development, especially as an office park. And looking at, you know, typical percentages of people who live and work in their same community versus who commutes to work, these seem like very reasonable assumptions on traffic patterns, and also considering the school traffic, they still, they also seem like reasonable assumptions. So this is what the applicant's traffic engineer proposed and used within the traffic study. There is discussion, there is discussion about single occupancy vehicle assumptions. There's, we said, you know, the applicant engineer did talk to staff pretty extensively about that. We wanted to use a very conservative number, because if you use too high of a number, you're not fully accounting for all the potential traffic. Again, because it is a very much highway-oriented type of development, we wanted it to be on the lower end of what you actually see. There's data in the staff report from the census about how many people are actually not driving in a single occupancy vehicle, and I think Louisville was around 14%. The Denver metro area was 16%. So this 12% is actually lower than what we see, so it's a conservative estimate, so we're not over, we're not reducing the traffic analysis too far, if that makes sense. There is a goal of 25% that I think is stated throughout the documents. I think with transportation demand management, we would all love to see that number tick up, but we don't want to overestimate it when it comes to building infrastructure. There was, there were questions about this table, which shows a summary of traffic generated by the development. It also shows the difference between the traffic study from last year and the traffic study and the traffic analysis update that we have. There's less square footage. The proposal last year had 3 million square feet. This proposal has 2 and a half million square feet, but the land use assumptions have changed. So if you reduce the square footage, you would think maybe the traffic, and again, this is all modeled, of course, based on assumptions. So you would expect the traffic would go down. There's 500,000 square feet less of development under the current proposal. However, they did model a hospital campus and medical office buildings, as we've discussed, because that is a, you know, a very potential development within this property. And those uses have higher traffic demand. So when you take that all into account, you have, you have totals, you have totals here in this green column, and then you have the difference between last year's study and this year's study. So average weekday trips, based on the updated assumptions, is over 20,000 trips per day. Last year's study was over 20,000 trips per day, but not quite as, as much over. So there's an increase of 641 trips. The AM peak, this is the total number of trips, 1,926, that's an increase of three. The PM peak hour, 2,176, that's an increase of 166 over last year's study assumptions. So I, I think that was kind of, the question was just, the commission wanted to walk through those numbers. There was a lot of discussion about the campus drive intersection. So this is, north is actually to the right, just to kind of orient you, this is rotated 90 degrees to the right. So this is 96, this is the campus drive extension, this, this is the proposed new extension of campus drive connecting to 96. I think it was, oh, I want to say like 740 feet between these two intersections, which is fairly close, and there's a North Metro Fire Rescue District Station here. So there was questions about, as cars are queuing to turn left or queuing at this light, are there conflicts with this intersection? So we did have the applicant's traffic engineer do a queuing or stacking analysis to show at full buildout, is there adequate lane length to accommodate the anticipated number of vehicles, so they're not conflicting? And the analysis does show that there is adequate stacking distances. One thing to note, though, is that the fire station does need a dedicated out here for emergency vehicle access, which they have today. And as long as that opening in the median is not over 65 feet, then there's adequate stacking distance. The current opening in the median is less than 65 feet. So there's even room to make that even a little bigger if the fire district wanted that. There will need to be some striping that you've, if you've probably seen this before, where it says, "Do not block intersection." So if, and if there is an emergency, the vehicles can get out, so. Okay, so there were questions about the grading plan, and I think this came in after the meeting. These were some of the emailed questions. There was, there were questions about cut-fill and grading. So within the drainage report that was part of the packet last month, there's a stormwater management plan and there's a drainage plan. The drainage plan has this grading plan, and you can see all the grading that's taking place to accommodate the roads. There's overlot grading to set up the lots for development. There's grading for drainage, and also a lot of grading here to accommodate a trail that's being planned. This pond would expand, so there's grading for this pond, and that's in one of the public dedicated tracks as well. So that's probably of note. There was a lot of questions about cut-fill, and that there is a cut-fill diagram in the stormwater management plan. You know, the, it shows some parts, you, you know, you'd have to grade down, other parts you'd have to grade up. There are areas where you would be grading up or down, even in the 15 to 20-foot range, so there is some pretty big grade changes happening within the proposed development area. There was a question about mineral rights? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Director Zuccaro, on this image and the one before it, is it fair to say, in the places where, within the property boundary here, where there are no green or red, those places will not be graded?
Well, that, yeah.
Okay, you'll get to.
Good, no, no, good clarification. I was, yes, so this is just the first phase, actually. So, and I do note here, I didn't say it, but at the PUD, PUD stage, there will probably be more precise grading plans for the development parcels. I would say, this is definitely how it would be graded for the drainage and the road. for the drainage and the roads.
Okay.
But, for example, there are development parcels proposed here. You don't see any grading. There absolutely would need to be some regrading, I think, for those development parcels there. I don't know how significant because the storage tech did used to have buildings there. So it should be relatively flat already. But with the road grades, there's probably still going to need to be grading. So, yeah, this doesn't show all of the anticipated grading. You know, definitely within the public lands, which is this area here, there's very little grading. But up into this public land dedication parcel, there's a fair amount of grading for the trail and the drainage. And then for the pond expansion, there'd be a fair amount of grading.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Can I ask a question while you've got that slide up?
Yep.
In that little table on the corner, it says, and I think it says that there's going to be a 250,000 cubic yard net export of soil. Is that correct?
Yes, so ba, based on this cut, fill, if you balanced everything out, there's that, there's that number, which is dirt that is not being used within this first phase.
Could you give us, I mean, most of us are pretty familiar with how much debris was removed from the Marshall Fire and how many trucks that meant on our roads. Could you give us an estimate about how this 250,000 or 240,000 cubic yards compares to what we removed? Or just how many trucks and over what time period?
I actually would have no idea. The applicant may know that. One of their consultants may know that. I, I do believe also that even though it says export, I think that just means excess. And it's possible that they won't be trucking it off the site. They may be storing it for future development and future phases. And so you could ask them maybe what their plans are for that. Mineral rights notification got brought up. There is a certification form that we do have developments fill out. So we did have them fill that out. That's included. Sustainability commitments. I do mention that at a subdivision plat stage, we typically don't look at those types of standards. That's very much, I think, a part of a GDP process. But we haven't engaged with them because it is a subdivision plat and there's a different purpose for this GDP in the zoning versus the subdivision plat. The only thing I do note is that the GDP from 2010 does have a transportation demand management requirement. So that is sustainability-related and being carried forward. Okay, I think I covered the questions that I was aware of. And there may be more. And I'm happy to answer those now or we can get to the applicant's presentation and move forward, however the commission would like to move forward.
Great. Do we have any quick questions for Rob at this point in time? No? Excellent.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry, I wanted to follow up a little bit. Thanks for clarifying, you know, why you use 12% as a conservative assumption for the transportation analysis. But what I was, I was also kind of asking about the goals in the transportation demand management plan. I mean, I understand that it's not a very detailed plan. And I appreciate that one of the conditions that we're putting forward is to have a detailed plan come before it goes to council. But the plan that I saw was pretty much two parts. There was one letter from Mr. Jay Hardy, which referred to another letter from, I think it was from 2020, or from Jordan Swisher. And in that letter, which was referred to, that stated a goal of 12%. And I wanted to just make, clarify whether or not that was a typo because that would be a ridiculously low bar, given that you've pointed out that we already have closer to a 25%. And then I just wanted to also just kind of note that I was hoping that if we do come up with a transportation demand management plan in more detail, that we could mesh it with our transportation master plan. Because in our transportation master plan, it notes that we already have 28.1% of people in Louisville commuting by non-SOV modes to work. And that our goal for 2030 is to have that be 35%. So I just felt like what was in the transportation man, demand management plan that we saw in our packet looked like it might have been a typo because you, you already mentioned in the transportation analysis, it said 25%. In the memo, it only said 12%.
Right, so I, I, I think the, from our point of view, what's really important is what's committed to in the plan itself. Because you're only going to, whatever percentage it ends up being in reality is only going to be as good as the resources that get put into it. So I think, you know, how, things we've talked about are eco-passes for the entire development. There is no RTD service right now. So having private shuttles or trying to get RTD service, having a coordinator, and these are things that are being discussed with the metro district, is having a transportation demand management coordinator that can work with the businesses, create carpool programs, vanpool programs, you know, requiring that all new developments have showers and covered bike facilities are things you often see in current developments. So I think making sure that subs, and we, you know, we don't know what technology is going to be like five or 10 or 15 years from now. So you don't want to say that's always the right solution. So there needs to be flexibility in solutions. So I think we're focusing more on creating a structure with the metro district that can sustain transportation demand management. As far as targets and goals of 25%, you know, I think we're all hopeful that, you know, all of our developments, not just this development, continue to increase and, you know, decrease single occupancy vehicle options. So I, I, I'm not sure if I answered your question about the, the number that's in there. The applicant can probably speak more to whether the letter was a typo or, or so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Dea.
Director Zakaro, in terms of the, the traffic study and the traffic consultant, just for confirmation, this was a consultant that the applicant paid for? Or the city?
Yeah, so the, so the, yeah, the traffic study and the traffic analysis is that's the applicant's consultant. And that's what's in the packet. The city staff has been working with our own third-party consultant to assist us with the review. And, you know, they've given our engineering staff notes that have informed what we've looked at. Most recently, we did also want to look at the queuing analysis. So we're glad we have that. I think we reviewed that. And based on the information we have, assuming that North Metro Fire is okay with the configuration, we do believe it works based on their traffic study assumptions.
Okay, so our consultant, our traffic analysis, our staff all agree that the 96th and the tollway will, that intersection will work with the new campus drive in terms of the queuing and the LOS?
Yes, I think they've, you know, they've looked at the study. And, you know, they think that the, the assumptions and the methodology of the study are good and the conclusions are reasonable. And so, yes.
Great. And then in terms of sustainability, I guess in terms of the application process, can you describe kind of how that conversation went in terms of what staff might have presented or stated to the applicant in terms of how important sustainability is? And, you know, obviously, it was important during the GDP process that didn't go forward. But I know it's not a requirement for this final plat process. But did that come up?
I don't think to, I don't think so to any specific extent. I think we focused on, okay, now you want to develop under the 2000 GDP. We reviewed those documents. And we really focused on, does this plan comply with that? We didn't, I don't recall a specific discussion or, there was definitely not a request from staff for a sustainability plan.
Mr. Osterman.
Thanks. I, I have a question going back to the diagram of the grading and the, the cut, fill. Because I guess one, one thing I'm trying to understand is how much of the land total will be left in a natural state? It seems like there are plans for a lot of grading and modification of the topography. So it's, so it also gets into the land that's dedicated. That land, if I'm understanding correctly, will not be left in a natural state. It will also undergo grading and modifications. Is that correct?
Yes, so I don't have an, I can actually pull up some other slides if we need to. But you, you, you might be familiar enough to generally know where the public land dedications are now. So, you know, largely this area here is, let me use this pointer. So largely this area here is public land dedication, both open space and park. You know, there is a public safety facility dedication here. So that's, there is a trail being graded in and then some of the street grade encroaching. And there's a small detention pond here. So that's probably the largest undisturbed area. This area does have a fair amount of grading in this area, which are both part of the open space public land dedications. There's trail public land dedications through here. And of course, those will be disturbed for the trail construction. One of the things that we have worked with the applicant on is habitat restoration. So they, you know, you can ask them for clarification. But, you know, there is a, they, they have talked, even with this application, about working with a consultant to do habitat restoration in those areas where there is detention and drainage. And so we are working with them through the construction document phase to understand how they will restore the habitat with the grading. So, but that, but you can see the areas here.
If you, if you can also use the mouse because that helps people who are watching online.
Yep. So this area here is all public land dedication. This area up here. And then around the pond here. So those are, those are the open spaces. And you can see what's being graded generally on this diagram.
So to follow up, so they're, they're open spaces, but they still will be modified. They, they will not be left in a quote-unquote "natural" state.
They would have to be restored where they're graded. Yeah, so, yeah. But that, but after that, we would, we will require that they be restored to a natural state. Our open space department would oversee that restoration work through the construction document process. But it wouldn't be undisturbed or untouched based on the proposal in the areas that you can see here.
And then just last question on that subject. So with, given that's the case, is there, has there been an analysis of the environmental impact? Is it, how can we judge the extent to which those modifications might have an impact on natural habitat or the land or the drainage? So on and so forth?
So I, you know, with the general development plan last year, there was a wildlife inventory. And so that wasn't included with this packet. But there is a wildlife inventory that we can present to the commission if you'd like. And it does talk about vegetation. And they did inventory the wildlife that they saw out there. You know, I would say a lot of our, I, I mentioned this at the last meeting, too, is that within some developments where there are open space dedications, there are some examples, and I mentioned Coyote Run. And all of those developments through there, you know, those were regraded and drainage infrastructure was installed within those open spaces. And then they were restored to a natural state. So that is just an example of, I, I think the closest analogy of what I think this would end up being if this is approved and developed in this manner. You know, you do have regrading to accommodate the development, and then it's restored. But there is no specific analysis on impact to wildlife. You know, I think looking at the subdivision criteria, there are criteria about preserving the natural areas. And there should be, you know, we should be looking, it, it doesn't mean that you preserve every undisturbed area in the development. Then you would never develop anything. So it's really looking at what's the most valuable areas from a habitat standpoint and trying to preserve those, I think, is the intent of the criteria.
Thank you.
Hi, Director Zakaro. When we're calculating the net public land dedication, I saw that you highlighted on that previous slide, George, is that, I saw you highlighted that northwest area and then the area around the pond. Is the land adjacent to 36? That, that berm, that rise in the land, is that also part of that 69.3 acres?
Right, yeah, good question. I, I kind of, I mentioned in the staff report, but I didn't mention it here. Is the applicant's proposing an 18-acre area down, sorry, yeah, down, down here. And then the berm, this is along US 36, and there's an 18-acre area down here. They were proposing that as dedication for public land. The staff is actually recommending that that remain as private open space, not to be developed, but the berm be preserved. These numbers do not include that. I've deducted those 18 acres out.
And I'm not, and a second question. When we're talking about grading, are we talking about preservation of trees and other things? Or is, when I imagine grading, I imagine we're just flattening the land and then rebuilding it to suit the open space requirements?
Yes, you, for the most part, if you're doing any grading and there are trees there, you typically would have to remove those trees.
And this may be a question that's more appropriate for the applicant. But if, if you're grading the majority of that site for construction, I imagine it would be difficult to leave certain parts ungraded and natural because that will affect the drainage to the areas that are constructed.
Yes, I think you have to be thoughtful if you're going to leave places undisturbed, that they do work with the drainage plan.
Okay, thanks.
Great, any last questions for now? Certainly, Commissioner Grant.
I just really appreciate that Commissioner Howard asked that question to, because it really paints a different picture when you show us, when you showed us in this packet addendum where this, brought back this information on how we're adding up the acres of public land. So that was really helpful. But I just wanted to follow up on something that Commissioner Osterman said. I do think that our code states that, so I can't remember the exact place, but it does say that a part of a subdivision application should show the location of the trees and other archaeological sites and other natural features. So that is part of the, I don't think that that was included in the packet. And that's a requirement for a preliminary plat. So if you add the wildlife survey, I don't know that that would be adequate to give us what we need for a sub, to evaluate a subdivision plat, a preliminary plat. Do you know which code I'm speaking of?
Yes.
It's in the preliminary plat contents.
Yes, we could pull that up and look at it and look through the documents and see if, what was provided to that level.
I looked really hard for the location of the trees, for example. And I thought that that was, you know, the only place I saw that was in some part of the, the drainage where there were certain trees that chose which ones were going to be removed and which ones were going to be kept. But I didn't find anything comprehensive that showed, you know, all of those things in one place. I think that would be really useful.
Okay, I, I, I'm sure we have that information through other documents. I'm not sure if it was in the packet or not.
The biological and cultural impact analysis or the biological and cultural survey? I can't remember the name of that.
There were a series of documents from last year's application.
That really included a lot of information on where the vegetation was, where the habitat is. But I underst, we can't consider that if it's not part of our packet. Is that right?
Well, no, but you can ask for the information and ha, and ask for it to be submitted into the record. I think we might have a survey, an ALTA survey, that may have that information as well. So we could try to find that information if you're asking for it. And then you can enter it into the record and review it.
But I think that what, to answer Allison's, I mean, Commissioner Osterman's question, I think that the biological and cultural resources analysis really shows us where the vegetation really shows us where the vegetation is and that wasn't part of our packet. And also there was a raptor survey that include, that, and a, the biological and cultural resources survey included where all the nest locations were, where all the wildlife was and included some vegetation. All we have in this packet for vegetation, which was really interesting, but it wasn't summarized, was the wetland delineations that included the species that they found to determine whether or not it was a wetland. But that, that's the only indication we have of what vegetation was on the site in this packet. So just.
So are you asking for us to provide that information?
I'm asking for more information, yeah, sorry. I was just feeling like we didn't have what we needed to do analysis.
Great, thank you for bringing that up. All right, any additional questions? Seeing, thank you very much, Director Zakaro. I invite the applicant up at this time with your name and address, please.
Okay, hello. Chair Brown, nice, good to see everyone again and the new commissioners. Nice to meet you. My name is Jeff Bockel. I'm with Brubachl Capital Partners. Very, very happy to be in front of you tonight to discuss our plat. We are going to go pretty quickly. We've been throwing a lot of information. I know there's a lot to talk about, so we're going to try to be efficient here. But there are some things we want to cover. So what we're going to go over is just very quickly who we are, a couple of points on that. Rob did a great job talking about the site history, but roll through that a little bit. We do want to go into a little more detail on the public land dedication. You know how important that is for the community. Talk about sustainability and habitat and some proposals we have in those fronts. Talk about mobility and traffic and then really just try to give you a vision of the site from our point of view. So I will go through that. So Brubachl Capital Partners is a real estate investment and development firm. We're based in Denver. But more than that, I think what's really important is that we are very, very local. And what I mean by that is I live in Superior. I've lived there for 22 years. My daughter currently goes to Monarch. Next year, I'll have my daughter and a son going to Monarch. So my wife is from Boulder, so we've grown up here. Jay Hardy, who you're going to hear from in a few minutes here, he grew up in Smash Hills. He has two kids that live across the street from Redtail Ridge right now. Jordan Swisher, who you mentioned, who's worked hard on this project, is from Boulder. She used to live across the street from this project. She now lives in Lafayette, across the street from Lewisville. Our CEO, our CFO both went to Boulder. Point being, this is our community and it's important to us. And it's because of that, there's an obligation for us to really create something that's special and that's amazing. And so we take that to heart. We brought on a vertical partner. We're so excited to have that partner be Sterling Bay. Sterling Bay is a, is a national development firm. They are known nationally for their placemaking ability. They're also known for their environmental sustainability and for state of the art facilities. So we couldn't be more thrilled to have them as partners. They, they're also happen to be experts in the life science and biomedical space nationally. And in fact, if I go to the next slide, just a couple of projects of theirs that are life science. That's one in Chicago and one in San Diego, which is a life science hub. They've recognized this corridor as another area of high education and area of life science and where that can really flourish. But they are such, they're such a value add. They're going to be great for creating Redtail Ridge into something special. So we're very, very happy to have them. So as mentioned, Rob went over this. I think the important things that we want to hit on is, one, of course, I think you all know, this was Stores Tech. They had 4,800 people employed on this site. And then importantly, and this is, this is something we're very proud of. This site has been closed to the public for its entire existence. It's been Stores Tech, it's been ConocoPhillips, it's been Private Family before that. And so for us to open this to the public and create really an asset for the community is something we're very excited about. We're proud of what we're kind of drafting here. And I think we're going to be really proud once we deliver it to the community. Quick summary, we brought this plat to the parks board, had unanimous approval. We brought this plat and this public land dedication, as you see it today, to Open Space Board and had a similar approval as well back in June. So let me go in a little more detail about the public land dedication. As mentioned, this is our community too. We know how important open space and open lands are, public lands are to this community and our community. It's why we're proposing 43% of this land to be publicly dedicated. So that's something we're very proud of, by the way, in coming forward with that. And something, and I'll talk about kind of how that stacks up with other commitments. But it's a, it's a large commitment. And in my opinion, it aligns with the community and their goals and what they seek. So there's a lot of numbers on this page. I think if we focus on the top two rows. This is, I just thought it would be helpful to do a little comparison of some other things that are put in front of you. Of course, there's the current GDP and this is the ConocoPhillips 2010 GDP that Rob's referred to, where the total public land dedication minimum, of course, is 38 acres. You've heard that number. A year ago, in front of you all, we had 93 acres, which was 23% of the project is public lands. And today, we're in front of you with 155 acres, which is 43%. And so it's growing and something we wanted to point out there. So I wanted to show this chart and just talk a little bit about the public lands. These are, this has been a very thoughtful process. We have met with Open Space Board, I think, at least twice on this formally. We're also back before COVID and before some other things, had them onsite. And we walked through and we actually, the plan that we first came through looked nothing like what you see this. We had more public land over on the east side, less by the school. And it got reconfigured by really feedback from the community, feedback from Open Space Board, feedback from parks to create what it is now. And I think what it shows you is, you know, there's, there's all these, I don't want to say requirements, but desires, contiguous, contiguous within the site, contiguous to other, other open spaces. And then buffers have been important and been described to us. And then trails, and we're talking about grading earlier, right? Well, some people don't want to touch a thing and some people want to have trails and have the public be able to access it. So it's a balance. And so this is, this has come a long way. And I'll talk about this again in a second. But also if you look at the 47.4 acres in Boulder County there, and you'll see, and I'm going to broaden out a map here, but you can really see there's a great connectivity. And that's another thing we've heard from the communities. How do we connect these trails? Because by the way, there's going to be 6.7 miles of trails within Redtail Ridge. How do we connect those to the existing trails in Lewisville and make it more usable for the community? So this comparison map on your left hand side is what we had in front of you. I know you weren't all here, but what we had in front of you and was approved by city council and planning commission a year ago. And then on the right is what we're having in front of you now. So the major differences, I guess I can use this mouse here, are of course the 47.4 acres here, which again, I think I'll show you, is a great connector site. And then some additional land through here, additional land around the pond and then some buffer land here. And so I just know some people, I think, had questions about, hey, what was it before? What is it now? And that's the major difference. There's also been discussion in the past. See a lot of what we're doing is trying to address potential questions of how does this stack up with other public land dedications in Lewisville's history? And so there's again, kind of a lot of numbers. I think if I could focus you on the column on the right, the percentage of open space. So Coal Creek Ranch was 46% in their proposal or in their public land dedication. I will note, and you see in the parentheses under Coal Creek Ranch, that 90 of their 104 acres was the development of a golf course. And so the last one on there is Coal Creek Ranch without the golf course, which is a much, much lower percentage. So with that, you can see where Redtail Ridge stacks up historically. And by the way, those are the three highest historically in Lewisville. This is the map I keep referring to. And if you see, sorry, where'd my mouse go? Looks like I lost the mouse. If you see this, this new, okay, yeah, if you use this, this, what I, one thing I'm excited about with this is we've got this, as I mentioned, 6.7 miles of trails. By the way, including this regional trail connector here, which currently does not go through. But by dedicating this land, it provides an opportunity to put a trail here, which we will do on our land, along the Good Hugh Ditch. And then it connects, again, another important aspect of open space is being contiguous with other open space. But it connects with this Boulder County open space here with the opportunity. Now, this is a dashed line, this doesn't exist today, but there's an opportunity to really connect that through, which is again, feedback we've heard over our time with this proposal. So, and then, and then more broadly, just looking at how our publicly dedicated lands here interact with the community around it. Okay, Jay?
Good evening, Jay Hardy, Senior VP with Brubachl. A pleasure to be in front of you tonight and appreciate your time. I'm going to go through a few of the different segments that Jeff outlined initially. We'll start with sustainability and habitat. You know, Jeff had mentioned the, the opportunity with Sterling Bay and the opportunity to really do something best in class. And we, we firmly believe that this will be, you know, one of the most environmentally sustainable life science campuses in, in the state of Colorado. You know, a lot of conversation has gone into how do we take care of water conservation, energy conservation, renewable energy, I'll touch base on that. There, there was a lot of conversation about sustainability and lack of commitment. So I want to provide, just because we don't have to do it with this process, we're going to do it anyway, a lot of those things. And the main reason is we want to build a great project. This is a, you know, you could build a project at a, at a core basis or you can build a great project and that's what we fully intend to do. So within our sustainability commitments, many of these were part of what was approved in 2021 as part of the GDP. So I'm going to go through them. The first one is really related to the solar creation. So the, the number of 2.165 megawatts is kind of a weird number, right? But it's really tied to one watt per buildable square foot. So in that calculation, what we're doing is we're just taking our total amount and backing the hospital out of that. And then at the PUD level, that discussion would happen with hospital. All the buildings would be designed as solar ready. So what that really means is that whether they have solar on the roof or not, they have to be designed that way and we're committing to do that. The electrification issue that is amongst all of us in the, in this country is something that we're committing to and certainly in the office and the retail buildings. That was something that was a big issue last fall. EV charging stations throughout the project. This is a little more difficult to define exactly where they are and what, what size they are. But through the PUD process, that will, you know, that'll transpire. We're committing to lead certification on all buildings, whether it be retail office or even the industrial buildings. Habitat Management Plan, we've mentioned that a couple of different times. We'll, Director Zakaro, I'd like to make sure we get that into the record if they, if it's not there because that plan is a very important part. Our partnership with the High Plains Environmental Center, I'll touch base on. I worked with them 15 years ago for, in a development in Loveland, a 3,000 acre project called Centerra. And some of the net result of the habitat and the revegetation and the things that were done there have really been fantastic. And then obviously the, the design side in, related to water and native drought resistant plants will be all part of that plan. So there was discussion about the habitat and wildlife management plan. So initially, I think it was a year and a half ago, we did an environmental impacts study. So we, we stepped back and looked at all the environmental impacts. That's when I brought the High Plains Environmental Center in as a partner to really try to make sure we're doing this right. That's not my expertise, it is their expertise. They're a nonprofit based in Loveland and they do a lot of consulting, but then they also do some of these larger master plant communities. So what they have really done is helped us with some of the biophilic designs elements, making sure that the sustainability coordinator, we had lots of conversations a year ago with her to make sure that we're doing what we should be doing within the city's code. And then she provided comments back to us, which, many of which were incorporated into this plan. The wildlife has also been a big discussion. So I just want to touch base on what has happened and what continues to happen. So the wildlife use study, that was done at the very beginning. We've continued to monitor all the burrowing owl studies and surveys. So we've been doing that on an ongoing basis. The raptor survey was mentioned earlier this evening. And so that's continued to be part of what we're doing. Prairie dog management plan will obviously be something we'll have to manage, you know, through this process. And so we've continued to work through that. The migratory bird nest, those were mentioned. The tree survey within the ALTA that Director Zakaro talked about, that will identify some of those things. But we're probably 90% through literally a tree by tree study so that we can say these, you know, the Russian olives, they need to go. The dead trees, they need to go. These trees, we really like, but they're in the wrong place. So we're going to actually pick those up, create a nursery on site so that we can then use those and reuse those. So that survey is not done yet, but it's all, it'll be done, you know, certainly prior to city council. And then the pollinator piece is really interesting. The picture on the left there, those are beehives that are actually on site now. And what's interesting about that, Sterling Bay has done this in every project they do. And so it wasn't something that we, it was just something they really wanted to do. And so you can see in, they also own the Lafayette, is it the Lafayette Corporate Campus, I think it's called. And so there's, they've got the same program over there. So those are some additional things that we're going to add in. Mobility and traffic, we've talked at length about that. So campus drive is one that we really wanted to, to focus on. You know, this is really the top unfunded priority within the TMP. You know, the ease and access of it, the safety, safety in and amongst and adjacent to the school districts has been, or the school system's been critical for us. And then Boulder Valley School District has approved these designs as well as contributed a little bit of land. And their board re-upped their commitment last, two weeks ago. TDM commitments were, was mentioned. So I want to separate those if I could. So on the left hand side, you'll see within the PCZD, there is a requirement to do a full TDM. So I wrote the letter that Commissioner Grantz referred to and that, that outlines some of those commitments. And then the full TDM report is, it's in a final draft that I'm reviewing now. And that will be finished prior to step going to city council. And that will refer to the 12%, the 25% and those, those items. So I did want to respond back to that. The 12% was really the minimum standard and the 25 is still, is still a goal. So if that, if that was authored wrong, then that was me. So I apologize. Additional commitments on the right hand side were just different options of evaluating, you know, how do we get people to not drive or to carpool? That will be done through, about halfway down, you see the development funded TDM coordinator or with a partnership. A Vision Zero, the trail program outline, first and last mile solutions. The ECO passes were mentioned, so we're committing to do that throughout the project. Obviously bicycle access and then shared and micro mobility studies or solutions. So all of those things will be packaged up into the finished TDM report that is, as I mentioned, in its final stage. Wanted to talk a little bit about the trip generation. So what was, what we've, Rob, Director Zakaro mentioned that we needed to update that with the projected use of a hospital. So we did that in July, you all have seen that. And it did prove that the, the original stuff in 2021 was still valid. And the Director Zakaro went through many of these. I'll not hit them too hard, but reduced square footage, we actually increased a little bit of the traffic. I'll talk about here in a minute. You know, over a third of all the traffic. here in a minute. You know, over a third of all the traffic that is in the plan now is associated to the 40 acres related to the hospital. And one of the things that you'll see is that the project really is designed to move auto traffic away from residential areas and, and more to the major arterials. So, this is, we call this a heat map, but it's really just to show, you know, where the, you know, red is a lot of trips, yellow is a little less trips, and green is not very many trips. So, this is the additional trips of this, if you add all this up, this gets us to that 20,000 per day. The one thing that this does do and does not do is that this does incorporate the hospital, so everything you see on the red head, the red side up against the parkway, that includes the hospital there. What it doesn't include is if you go up to where the hospital currently is, you see the plus 220, it doesn't take away the old hospital. So, when you pick the hospital up and move it, and that goes away in this location here, this would probably be a negative 2,000 in terms of reducing trips up and against the neighborhood there. So, it, it's, it's statistically valid, but this includes one hospital, but it doesn't take away the other one. This is just basically the same thing said differently, so medical and hospital only, you can see is about 7,200 trips of the 20,000, or 35% of that. So, the, and then the, the left column here is AM Peak, and then PM Peak, you can see. It, it, the interesting part about the hospital is, unlike a major employer where people are loading at 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock and unloading at 4:00 to 5:30, i- it's much more distributed throughout the day. The numbers are a little bit higher, but when they actually occur within the day are a little bit different. So, quick snapshot into the vision for the site. We've talked about some of this, but a preeminent life and bio, bio campus, bioscience campus. We've got, you know, obviously, a huge public land dedication. We've talked about the sustainability, really is the goal for us to attract the best companies in the world, and then also, hopefully, a new home for Avista. So, let's talk about that real quick. So, the, the, the staff had determined earlier this spring that it wasn't allowable use under this commercial zoning, so that's a good thing, so we could continue to head down that path. Avista is now under contract to purchase 40 acres, which I'll show you where that is on the, on the east side. The, the total developable area that was talked about in traffic is 435,000 developable square feet, and then they do anticipate some of that first vertical development happening in the first phase. So, as you look through your plat, if you look through, we, that's the only lot, even though it's not saying hospital, but we did outline a 40-acre location in the final plat in Block 2, Lot 2, and that would be the, the lot that is under contract with Avista. Some of their impacts, I, I won't talk too much more about this, we've hit most of these in terms of the, you know, where the traffic's coming from, and, and we know that, obviously, is the largest employer in Lewisville, it's an important part of, of what we're trying to accomplish. And then finally, on the hospital, this is the proposed location, so the, this, you know, the hatched area that shows the hospital, the only thing that's not exact is it doesn't show in the bottom right-hand side, there's, right here, there's a detention facility here, but then this would be basically a 40-acre campus that they're beginning to do some of the design. So, one of the things that is very unique about that, we've been asked a question, you know, they're only a mile away, what, what, what's the big deal? And it's between a seven and an eight-minute difference coming off of 36 to hit this site compared to going up and around. And so, if that was my mom or my child in the ambulance, that eight minutes is important. So, and that, you know, they're, they're really landlocked, and some of the things that you see at most medical campuses now, a cancer center, some of those things, they don't have the ability to do that. They haven't identified their full program yet, but I know that that's part of what they're doing. So, really, the, the third bullet down there, that 15-minute radius, the amount of the service area that it increases just by moving a mile, I don't have the exact, no, I've seen the numbers, but it would be the hospital's information to share, but it's a, it's a significant number. So, finally, I'm gonna turn it back over to Jeff. We wanted to show you a few renderings, won't take very long, just of what, how we envision the site looking.
So, as members of the community, we really, there's a lot of natural aspects of the site that we wanna preserve and utilize, because it's beautiful. And I think, these are just four slides here, just to give you sort of a sense of our vision of what this would look and feel like. So, this is Campus Drive, obviously looking to the west. This is the main entry from Northwest Parkway, so this would probably be the most utilized entry, right off 36 and Northwest Parkway, coming into the site. Hospital would be right there on the right. This is just meant to show, you know, a rendered view of the workplace environment, again, very natural landscape, some trails, a very healthy place to live, and this is meant to be sort of heart of the site, in the center, still accentuating the natural attributes of the site. So, in summary, we're proposing a plat tonight that is in accordance with the governing GDP. Our vision, as Jay mentioned, is to build a preeminent life science and bioscience campus, really next generation, state-of-the-art, and importantly, create an economic driver for Lewisville to keep, you know, Lewisville's the best place to live and keep it going. A new home for Avista. Avista has a lot of needs, they are a wonderful employer, a wonderful anchor for this community, they have a strong desire to grow, it's all driven by them, and that move is important to them. Huge public land dedication, I think is in alignment with the city and their goals. Best-in-class sustainability, conservation, we have an innovative Habitat Management Plan, and then close to me is the extension of Campus Drive. It's unsafe, it's a top priority for Lewisville. We're building it Phase 1 as soon as we can with this approval. So, with that, I'll stop. We do have a couple consultants here as well. Jay and I are happy to answer any questions or attempt to answer any questions you might have, but thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. I think we'll just take a five-minute break right now, and then we'll come back to Commissioner questions.
Recording stopped.
Great, if we can call a meeting back to order, please?
Recording in progress.
And we have one thought. Actually, can we ask the applicant if you can pull up your very first slide with some bullet points and kind of your presentation overview? And we've had a thought that we can try out for the commission is to look at some of the bullet points and keep our initial discussion and questioning focused on some of the ideas or concepts that they have no proposal, yeah, there's.
The applicant, sorry.
Now, we'll, we'll skip discussing the history of, of the developer, but we can, and we fully expect there'll be some crossover, yeah, second slide, I guess. Yeah, no, Beck, you were on it.
Come on.
So, as a commission, if we want to, we can kind of begin with discussing and asking questions of the applicant following their presentation, knowing that we'll have crossover and other questions will come up for them as we proceed through, but, so as commission then, questions for the applicant, beginning with the, I assume, site history area, or perhaps, yeah?
Sure, I can start. So, Jeff, if you could bring up, I think it was Slide 11, and I'll take another shot at getting my question answered. I'm still a bit confused in terms of why the Paradise Lane is considered part of the public dedication. Is that land that you own and that are dedicating? Okay, it is. That's very helpful. Okay, 'cause that helpful.
Yeah, so what, so what we own, what we own actually includes the 47.4 acres in Boulder County on the top of this map, and also the 40 acres down in Brumfield.
Okay. And I believe that was land that had been purchased by ConocoPhillips as time had progressed. It wasn't initially part of the ConocoPhillips ownership and they purchased.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Just sticking with that, explain to me why you think that's an appropriate open space dedication for this project?
Well, I think it's fantastic open space dedication. One is what I talked about with the Goodhue Ditch and their alignment, and two is, and we've heard this multiple times, is how is the open space connecting to other regional open spaces? And so, if I click on here, you can see this is an important connector to all that open space to the north. And so, that also is very minimally disturbed, I would tell you. And that was another important thing, is what's the least kind of disturbed land, obviously Storage Tech was there, and, and if you can see my cursor, disturbed a lot of this land. This is, outside of, there's a couple existing homes that are, that no one lives in, to be clear, that are abandoned, and the Open Space Advisory Board said, hey, we wanna, I can't remember the terminology they used, but they wanted to clear the homes off, but it's very high quality, and, and the Open Space Advisory Board agreed with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah.
So, going back to the slide with the, the table, just wanna, for clarity's sake, that doesn't include the, the Brumfield, okay?
Commissioner, how, did you have a question?
Do I recall that there's limitation, there, there can be building on those lots? There can be residential building on those lots north of what is proposed to be Campus Drive?
Correct. So, it would be lower density, but, I mean, large residential sites in Boulder County are valuable, you know? So, so it is a dedication, and we would obviously be not doing that. So, to be clear, because I think that was a question of last month, once we dedicate the land, there is no building on the land, ever.
Any additional questions on site history, public land dedication, thoughts right now? Please?
Just going back to the slide with the table, is that Slide 11?
Um, I think.
Or, yes, that, yes, this one. So, the, the bottom line that gives the comparison of square footage.
Yes.
Of build. So, with this current plat, the proposal is 2.55 million square feet. My, my question is just to get a sense of how that compares to the initial GDP, the 2021, in terms of the, the spread of land that will be used to build out that square footage. And I'm not sure if that's super clear, but where this question is coming from is a lot of public comments were about trying to consolidate the, the development, the buildings, and so was there consideration of, of approaches to, to try to consolidate, or how does it compare to? was there consideration of approaches to try to consolidate? Or how does it compare to that current GDP and the amount of land that was built under that?
I'll try to answer that, but I think I understand where you're going with that. And so a couple of things. One, just to start with the chart. So the current GDP, which is the ConocoPhillips two thousand ten GDP, had approval for two point five five million square feet. The GDP that we proposed, that was approved, but then the referendum took it down, was three point one million square feet. So now we're coming back with a plat under the two thousand ten approved GDP, so we're back to the two point five five million. In terms of where disappears sometimes. Where the development goes. Again, another consideration of the public land dedication was there was a strong desire to keep the rural feel on the west side and keep the traffic and allow the development more concentrated on the east side, which is why you can see in the traffic studies and everything, it's, that's where most of this impact's gonna be. In fact, in my opinion, you extend Campus Drive and like Jay mentioned with the hospital actually picking up and moving, eighty eighth and Dillon are gonna be relieved in this. But in terms of your question of the concentrating, it'll be within the white zone here. There was conversations, including with this commission a year ago, or a little over a year ago, about heights and different things. What become so challenging is that we don't know what's gonna be built on each particular site. And that's a PUD question. Because we didn't know, it was hard to say, well, how is this gonna impact view corridors or different things? And so we took that, we removed all of that in this, in that case, from the GDP. And it's now going to the PUD is where that will be discussed.
Thanks.
Commissioner Chris.
Thanks. And these illustrations really help a lot. I was wondering if you could put that table back up again and I could follow up on Commissioner Osterman's question a little bit. Were yours, I, I'm wondering if you could discuss the, when she's talking about the, oh, I don't, the two, the current GDP is the ConocoPhillips GDP. And that was much more concentrated, right? That had two hundred and twenty two acres of private common open space in addition to the thirty seven acres of public land dedication. So it had about a total of two hundred and sixty acres of open space, regardless of whether it was private or public. So would you, I just wanted to clarify, was that one, that one was just on a smaller footprint? So I think that I was wondering if you could address the difference in the footprint. I think that's what she was asking. I'm not sure, but yeah.
I just want to make a clarification back in two thousand ten, because it is confusing.
Yeah.
But the general development plan from two thousand ten, which was in your packet, that's the one-page plan. It does not actually address the two hundred acres of common open space that you're discussing. That was on the preliminary PUD that was also reviewed and approved in two thousand ten, but has since expired. So that was part, so it's somewhat significant, because that's not a regulatory document anymore. The regulatory document is the two thousand ten GDP that we're discussing, which does not have any requirements for clustering of buildings or the common open space that was shown on the PUD.
But to be fair, I mean, that would mean we could have another column, which would be two thousand ten preliminary plat, expired, two hundred and twenty acres, which would.
Yes, if you wanted to compare it to the PUD document, just to understand what's changed, we can certainly look at that. It's just not a, I just want to be clear, it's not regulatory. They're not obligated to meet that document.
So. Sorry about that. Could we just look at the map then? Where you compared the two thousand and twenty one GDP to the current proposal? On the diagram on the left that was previously approved, but then rescinded after the election. Wasn't there an additional twenty nine acres, including a little triangle to the left? And the area around the pond that was part of the conditions of that approval? Because I see that as almost exactly the same as what was dedicated before. Because in the approval conditions of that GDP, there was an additional twenty nine acres.
Yeah, I guess.
And so I would think that those two are actually almost the same, except for the development to the north.
Well, yeah.
And they tracked.
Forty seven acres here.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the, do you recall that? Now, what Planning Commission approved a year ago was exactly this comparison.
Oh, okay. I was talking about what was approved by city council.
Right. And this is Planning Commission. So that's the difference. Now, with city council, you're right, I think there was this triangle, if you can see my cursor here, and that, and around the pond here did not include this and did not include the forty seven acres to the north.
Any additional questions related to site issues, history? For now, we can come back as other things come up, but. Can we ask you to bounce back up to your second slide there? Sustainability and habitat? We have line of questions surrounding that, I'm sure. Commissioner Moline?
I would start one about grading. And just if you could clarify some of the discussion that we've heard a little bit this evening on grading and I guess maybe for starters, you could talk about what you anticipate that twenty five or two hundred and fifty thousand excess? And just talk us through a little bit about the grading for the site. Yeah.
So Directors of COW went through the cut fill map, and the net-net of that is an excess of two hundred and fifty thousand yards. So we do not anticipate any trucking of that off-site at all. We, at the PUD level, will get much more specific on twenty thousands here and ten thousands there. But the biggest thing we were trying to do at the very beginning is just to make sure that we weren't short or that it was balanced. And so what we do with that two hundred and fifty, it'll stay on-site. We're not trucking it.
So when, obviously, you've probably seen a lot of the public comment too. How would you respond to the comment about, you know, it looks like the development's overloading the site? And how do you, how would you say you have approached your grading to try and protect areas that are gonna become open space? And what's complicated that? Or how would you describe that?
Yeah, well, you know, I think when you look at the overlot grading program in the open space areas, much of what is being graded has to be done for roads, it has to be done for drainage. We're not cutting and filling stuff just to do it.
Right.
In that, the big white section.
Northwest corner?
Central area?
Yeah, I mean, this, this central area.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's where the majority of the cut fill is gonna happen. Up here, there's cut fill because that has to enlarge, bigger than it is today. And then this doesn't, you know, this will obviously have to be cut in as well. But in terms of disturbance up here, the disturbance would be related to the trails and it'd be related to drainage.
Okay.
And the same would be true, you know, over in this location.
All right, thanks.
I have a follow-up question on that, if I could interject.
Please go ahead, yeah.
Because it may be consistent with the line of questioning. So I like, in the slide thirteen, I do like how we're getting more green over time as we look, as we look at more and more proposals. So I think when I think of this proposal, I want to thank you for that, for getting, and I think in our original discussions, we had talked about that that pond on the far right being part of open space. So I think that that's a valuable acquisition. Let me ask you this question, maybe from the other perspective from Commissioner Moline. Is there a possibility of maintaining topography, especially in that northern area of open space, without grading?
This area? This area up here?
That whole green area on the top.
Tim, do you want to speak to that? This is Tim Saylor with HKS. He's our engineer. And you don't want me answering that question.
Good evening.
Sorry, you name an address, please.
Tim Saylor. I'm with Harris, Kocher, Smith. I live in Denver, but I'm the civil engineer for the project. If you're talking about the area just north of campus, or are you talking about this northwest? I can speak to both, if you'd prefer.
Maybe both, or maybe more.
Yeah, so the main grading done in this area just north of campus, in the buffer area that was mentioned earlier, is done, as Jay mentioned, for the drainage channel that goes through there. I don't know if you can maybe pull up the cut fill map you had earlier? That might be helpful, but the, you know, the grading that is done in there, like I said, is for the channel. And then as it gets up to, there's a little existing pond, sort of where I have my cursor, that is existing habitat that we're not disturbing, but the channel does run through it. So on either side of it, we have grading to ensure that the water drains to the east, in this case, as it's intended to. And then grading continues, you know, to the west from that pond that we're not disturbing, through the culvert under Campus Drive and into a little bit of just west of the campus culvert. And that's all just to get the drainage needed to go where it needs to go. For this area over here, we have some grading, but it's just for the trail that cuts through there. And that's why I wanted to look at the cut fill. It was kind of hard. You guys saw two PDFs earlier, the cut fill map and then a map showing contours. And the contour map, it's hard to tell because there's two surfaces shown on that, an existing grade and a proposed grade. And the existing grade is shown through there on that PDF, because you need to show what the existing grade does. But on the cut fill, where it compares the two and shows where we are actually cutting and filling, it does not show any numbers in this area other than over the trail, which we have to grade in. Does that answer your question?
So if that Campus Drive, let's assume, and this is gonna get to a discussion point down the road when we get to another slide. Let's assume that Campus Drive was not there.
Okay.
Could you leave that area ungraded and still complete your construction?
Not to comply with the current drainage standards that the city has and mile-high flood control district governs it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Yeah, please, Commissioner Chris.
All right, while we've got the engineer here, could you put in layman's terms the difference in the two runoff coefficients? And how that was in the, I think that was in the storm water management plan? And what the practical difference is between what the storm water runoff coefficient is now and what it will be after the site is built?
The runoff coefficients used to calculate the drainage on the site, it's, there isn't, it's more complicated than putting it into layman's terms. It's, there's runoff coefficients for parking lots that are higher impervious values. There's runoff coefficients for open space, which is a very low impervious value. I don't have, off the top of my head, the composite runoff coefficient for the entire proposed site. And it's hard to determine without knowing what we're going to be building in the white area shown here. So I know that doesn't answer your question a hundred percent.
There were two numbers given at the very beginning of the document, but I haven't pulled it up either. That helps a little bit, but I was just wondering if there was an effect of those.
Well, the difference would be the runoff coefficient for the site as it exists today is probably pretty low because it's just dirt. And if it were to never be developed, it would stay that way. But development in and of itself tends to increase that because you have more impervious area.
I'm so sorry. I do understand that, but is that runoff that's going to go off of the site? Or is that runoff that's going to be incorporated into the drainage system?
Per city criteria and mile-high flood criteria, everything must be detained on-site. And that's what the ponds shown are for.
So it doesn't change our flood risk category, anything like that? Thank you.
No.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I think we're done with that topic, I think. Thank you.
I think the next category is mobility and.
Well, yeah, I wanted to hit sustainability a little bit, a little bit more, but done with drainage. So in terms of the sustainability action plan, I guess just process-wise, how does that get memorialized into the process? Because obviously, it sounded like that wasn't part of the package. We weren't really, weren't requirements around sustainability, but then in the presentation you just gave, we've got, that was referenced.
You know, it's an excellent question. I mean, there's a couple of places I think we could memorialize that. I would ask Director Zakaro whether it's.
Right. So there'll be a subdivision improvement agreement? So if you wanted to go to that list, if there were certain, I mean, there's a couple of ways to do it. You could require a plan in the subdivision improvement agreement. You can require certain commitments on the slide. And then the plan could dictate what is included, but the subdivision improvement agreement.
And I'm not remembering. Has that been drafted? Is that?
It has not been drafted.
Okay.
Yet. It will be drafted before it goes to city council. It typically addresses construction of public infrastructure, but it can include other development requirements within the agreement such as this.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess from my perspective, these bullets are helpful, but lack a little detail in terms of what it's actually committing, you two. So I mean, that would be, you know, we need to determine that, in my view, before we would move forward.
Yeah, in the last step, you remember, that was actually, where there were thirteen conditions, that was actually in the ordinance that was approved by city council in September. So that's where it got memorialized. I'm sure it would somewhat get memorialized, but how it actually gets to a, you know, a legal requirement, sounds like the SIA is the best location for that.
Go ahead.
So are you, am I hearing you say you would be willing to commit to those from that original?
Yes.
Yeah? And those could be incorporated in a subdivision improvement agreement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions?
Well, I guess, I think there's probably more detail behind each one of these bullets that we would need to understand. And I don't know if we want to get into it now or do a continuance and have us have something to review. But what are your thoughts?
Question for staff.
Yeah, I mean, we can go on a public record if you want to describe each one of these in a little bit more detail, so that's on the record. And, you know, perhaps we could say, based on what was described in Planning Commission, we could move forward, or there might be more detail that needs to be hashed out.
I think that's up to the comfort of the commission. You could, there's a couple of ways to do it. You could, you could ask for a plan to be submitted so you can review it, or you can ask for a condition that it be included before city council based on their description on the record this evening, so. Just, I think it's up to the discretion of the commission on how they'd like to see it.
Okay, maybe we'll just take that up for deliberation.
I guess maybe Commissioner Deal, what do you, so.
Primarily questions for the applicant right now, or we can, deliberation, I think we can nail it down.
Well, I just think to build on that comment, for example, what level lead certification for the building would be, and there's one through five, right? So what, and that each category has a certain requirement. So that would be one example of what we're talking about. To say it's lead certified, maybe a little vague.
Have any questions for the applicant regarding sustainability at this time?
Well, I do see on that habitat management plan, I think we mentioned that, is this an appropriate time to ask about that, or is that going backwards or forwards?
Yeah, either way.
So the habitat management plan, I'm wondering if you could just build on that a little bit. I know you mentioned it, you were really proud of it, and I thought maybe a few more details on that?
Yeah, I mean, we went through the entire development and then we decided what are the things that are most important? You know, and they were related to the trees, they were related to the species that were out there, they were related to protecting those. Within the plan, there's a series of different ideas. Within the plan, there's a series of different ideas and recommendations. And what we would plan to do is have that actually be memorialized into commitments, you know, at the city council level. This was really to address kind of at the high level, related to some of the 13 conditions that were, you know, part of the previous thing. I know those are two totally different things, but the sustainability piece, the habitat, those are very important to us as well. So we wanted to make sure that the commission knew, even though we were not required to do that, that in order to build the best project we can, we wanted you to know that we were committing to those. The details of those will probably be at the city council level through the SIA.
Additional questions?
Sure. One more on the habitat management plan? I think that the way this process will work, then our planning commission would not have an opportunity to review and comment on the habitat management plan. If that's the way that should work, I just wanted, I have, I think I'm familiar with the one that was submitted, part of the previous proposal. So would we be able to, would we make conditions for some changes in that, or would we hear that and continue here?
So I think I would say, if you, you know, if you have reviewed and want to rely on that in your deliberation and decision-making, that all of the commission should have the same document for one. And you should probably request to have that put in the record and have it reviewed. Because really, we should be reviewing what's in the record, and if it's not in the record, you should ask for it to be put in the record, so everyone can consider it equally.
Questions for the applicant regarding this issue area? All right, then, then transportation and mobility, I believe. Mobility and traffic. Questions for the applicant? None? Commissioner How?
Can you think of any way to improve the, this seems like the campus drive to 96th Street is going to be really congested, driving those streets. I'm sure we all understand that. Have you ever considered any other layouts for a campus drive, any other paths that that could take to elongate the junction between it and 96th and the east-west corridor?
I'm being a little sarcastic here, but I think this is well into the second full year of having the same question answered. We, obviously, that, you know, you could take it all the way up to the north. We can't do that because Boulder County, or because of the setback. You know, the plan was reviewed by city staff. It was reviewed by Boulder Valley School District, it was reviewed, obviously, by the traffic engineers, by the fire department, then validated by the city's traffic engineer. So the only other one that we had was where the road goes up and ties into Paradise Lane. And that was discussed, but then you run into the buffer issue on the north. So this was the one that the four collective jurisdictions felt was the best route.
Any other questions regarding mobility and traffic? All right, then, seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation. We are going to move to open public comment. Why don't we take another quick-
I am so, I have one question on the vision for the site.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And I think that maybe this is something that will be covered in public comments, and I really hate to take away time from the public that's come out tonight. But one of the questions was regarding what you, how you define life sciences and biotech. And specifically, does that include, what types of manufacturing would that include? Does that include, like, for example, pharmaceutical manufacturing? Or would it include manufacturing using biological processes? Like, for example, plastics made from using natural polymers or something like that? Just trying to get an idea of what kind of industrial uses are envisioned, or what other, what your definition for biotech is.
So there's, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a very broad category. And as you could see, when Jeff went through some of the life science buildings that Sterling Bay has done, and San Diego, and Chicago, those end up basically being predominantly office buildings, but then internal to those, there's lab. Think of creation of vaccines and pharmaceuticals and those kind of things. So that's kind of one end of it.
The research side.
Yes, the research side. Then the other end of it would be the actual production of that. That would be more of an industrial-type building that would be a manufacturing, manufacturing process. Your question about the types of things that are, you know, in the, you know, actually being manufactured, or the products being used in there, I'm, that's not something I can answer. We could get a better vision from them, in terms of what that would look like, but I'm not, I'm not smart enough to answer that question.
Thank you.
And one more on the vision. This may not be in the scope that you can answer this, but what happens to the old Avista campus?
You're right, I can't answer that.
Okay, that's right, thanks.
We can agree on that.
Additional vision questions? No? All right, seeing none, then, thank you very much. We'll take another five-minute break. Just to let people know, we'll be ending somewhere between 9:00 and 9:30, so we're hoping, well, I think we'll certainly get everybody's public comment in who's here this evening. Hard to tell exactly how many we have. We might have maybe 10 people online. So we'll see if we can dovetail everybody together, so we can have both remote and in-person comments. Thank you very much.
Recording stopped. Freshman year, how is, how is that going?
She's going okay. This week she didn't have any homework. Said she was surprised. A little surprised, too.
Yeah.
Maybe just take a run outside. Well, I mean, we could do the bathroom, but there may be people in there. Want to check it out? Hey, Ben.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Because the community of them grew a lot.
It's going to be jarring from your world.
Was, yeah, that kicks in, right? Yeah, that's true.
Yep. I was wondering if that's going to be this year, or maybe next year, but.
Yeah.
I was actually pretty impressed with the Monarch, you know, we like to open houses. Weren't ever considering the other ESD ones, but just to go, and, I mean, they had a couple of kids from one batch that you, somebody else from some other school, and he was describing from Monarch, did a good job of comparing him for college. College was not that big of a transition, kind of workloads, study habits.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
College is that transition.
Yep.
It's just, it's purely high school, it doesn't have middle school, right?
No, the Monarch campus is kind of 12.
Oh, okay.
They do separate, they're pretty separate. Obviously, by design, applied pretty good.
Yeah.
So my son's in seventh grade at Monarch.
Oh, okay.
Very familiar with Monarch. It's been great. Do you know, like, the schools your kids go to?
Well, yeah, we have a little bit of time.
Hi. You know, if we end up doing a continuance tonight, it might be good to think about an overflow meeting. To, because we've got a lot of other items coming up.
Yep.
The 22nd, which is two weeks from tonight, might be a good date for an overflow meeting, so if you want to think about that, if we're headed in that direction.
She actually- Okay.
Just from a time standpoint, request for a continuation. It could be other dates, too, but maybe we can have that discussion as we get to the end of the night.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Good point.
Yeah, I haven't really thought about high school, but we live close to fireside, so all the kids on our block walk into school, which I'm really excited about. I, where I grew up, I had to write this kind of book.
Yep.
So the idea of being able to walk, it's just such a-
Totally.
It's a novel.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
You know, I love that area, just because, well, you can obviously walk to the rec center.
Yeah, that too, yeah, yeah. We spend a lot of time at the rec center.
Sorry, I was checking my calendar here. Yeah, September 22nd.
Oh, good, yeah, I just looked at my calendar, so it works for me, too.
There's a slight chance I might have to remote in, but I'll definitely take time for it.
Also, I don't work, so I don't, whatever.
Yeah, yeah. November 1st, which still feels like quite a while away. Yeah, everything's going well, yeah, yeah.
By November 1st, is it going to be like a 15-pound baby?
I actually had a prenatal appointment today, and that's what my midwife was asking me, how big this baby's going to be. But with my first, she went two weeks over, and so everyone was saying, oh, she's going to be huge. She was seven pounds six ounces. So I'm not, yeah, I'm not super worried about that.
That's so neat. I'm good for the 22nd.
Okay. Yeah. If we're getting, I have a paperwork I need to continue.
Yeah.
And so we were, you know, assuming we're going to continue for information time, we're thinking about an overflow meeting, which, two weeks from tonight, I'm going to suggest, which is the 22nd, for an overflow, just so we can continue to adjourn.
Mm-hmm, all right.
Okay.
Keep doing as much as we can tonight, sure.
Yep, yep.
How's that sound to other people?
Works for me.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, okay.
Works for tomorrow.
Works for tomorrow, all right. Then it better work for me, too, then, I guess. I can't get to my calendar fast enough.
Well, you know, I feel like I should just work for it.
Great, if we can call a meeting back to order, please. Just a note, when we're, when we're actually, probably all of us-
Recording in progress.
When we're all using microphones, for the sake of clarity, it's been noted that it may be hard, that we all kind of fade off towards the end of our comments. And so for people who are both joining us online, and for other people, it may be helpful just to keep our comments clear and strong. So, all right, with that, then, public comment, excited to open public comment here. We will begin, actually, in adding the two addendum to our public comment, if I could have a motion to do that.
So moved, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We do ask people to limit yourselves to three minutes, and begin by stating your name, full name, and address. I believe we have a number of comic cards, and if you can help us with a couple of those for starters, and then we'll go to online.
Sure, so we have JoJo Fulmer, and then we'll have Matt Jones on deck. Hi, my name is JoJo Fulmer, and I live at 1712 Steel Street in Lewisville. And I believe that Red Tail Ridge should not be recommended for approval. Not enough has been improved in this plan, and our area already has so many more jobs than houses. So by adding a new business center, it will increase the volume of commuting into Lewisville even more. From a climate standpoint, that would be devastating with several thousand new car trips every day. And from an equity standpoint, that will only further increase the housing costs of Lewisville, making it an even more unaffordable place for many people. And furthermore, Lewisville doesn't even need a new commercial development, since there are already several empty commercial lots. So adding this would be unnecessary, and the lack of open space in this plan is also devastating. Well vacant, most of that lot has become grassland and wilderness that is vital to the ecosystem. And Red Tail Ridge would be destroying almost all of that and turning it into parking lots and cement buildings. And this would decrease the amount that, of carbon that the soil could hold, increase the temperature of that area through heat island effect, and also hinder the land's ability to absorb water, making flood mitigation more difficult, along with several other terrible effects of turning that into buildings. And so Red Tail Ridge is not needed in Lewisville, and it will harm many aspects of the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, thanks for listening. Do you hear me? Nope, I was pushed, I was muting myself. Thanks for hearing us tonight. My name is Matt Jones at 265 Dahlia Drive, Lewisville. I'm not speaking for the county in any ways. It's me as a Lewisville resident speaking to you. I love this town, I want to keep it a great town. Let me tell you, talk you a little bit about the community, then quasi-digital hearings, and a little history. And I'm talking, I'm talking at a real high level, and so if you'll indulge me. We just had an election around this issue, and if the proponents, the developer, lost by five points. Five points in a presidential election is a landslide. That's what a pundit will tell you if that happens. They outspent the locals 32 to 1, if I remember my number right. Had that not happened, had been 1-1, it would have been about 20-point loss. It's a signal, it's a signal to us from the community that this plan that they voted on wasn't near good enough, and there needs to be a lot more done. Now, to the quasi-digital hearing. I do quasi-digital hearings every, almost every week. I did one today. Not nearly as complex as this, but they're still quasi-digital. And I heard you were counselled to say that this is based on criteria, not the, not public comment necessarily. The fact is, is that rules are nothing more than public sentiment crystallized and institutionalized into norms. They're from the community, and you overlay that with what the community's saying, because you're a representative of the community. That's your job, to use the criteria to reflect what the community would want. And I would suggest to you that they want a really, really, really good plan. Now to the history. You do not see a shopping center across from King Supers on the, on the open space property, because the citizens came to town hall and said, no. You don't see it up by Aquarius Trailhead, same thing, a shopping center, no. You don't, you see more land on Davidson Maisick, as the citizen showed up and said, we want more open space. This town has stood up for open space, and what we have now, and what we take for granted, was fought for and stood up for. Talk to some of the old city council members, they'll tell you. And I want, I hope you do the same thing, because we're depending on you to do it. This plan, yes, there's more open space, but the fact is, and the second largest public dedication according- indicating that the school district agreed to it, or that they were, you know, some calculations indicating they were no longer necessary. The, um, I'd also, um, call that, you know, living off eighty-eighth Street, um, since that's entirely within city limits, I don't want the inevitable delays that come with multi-jurisdictional traffic and road improvements to be delayed, and suddenly people are improving eighty-eighth Street ahead of whatever improvements need to be made on Ninety-Fifth Street and, um, and Campus Drive. I think everyone sort of understands that intuitively, but right now, my temporary residence is right off of Route Seven by the Erie Airport, and, uh, you know, from neighbors, they've been telling me that's been going on for over a decade trying to get that road wiped. So, because of the number of municipalities involved. I also want to call for the, um, Planning Commission to sort of, uh, make sure you maintain the limits that were in the two thousand ten general development plan. I've heard numbers thrown around both tonight as well as in August that were higher than the, uh, the number that, uh, it seems to be two point five five appears to be, at least my calculation of what the number is. Um, there was a, a presentation from the applicant where, when you added up the hospital plus the, uh, office space on their sustainability plan, they were over that number, and, uh, and Planning Director also referred to a higher number than that limit in the August meeting. So, let's make sure we stick to the limit, because that's what the voters asked you to do. And finally, on the economic analysis, while you did take out the, uh, use tax and property tax contributions of the hospital, I believe you need to take out the employee contribution as well, because, as noted by the applicant, this is a Vista Hospitals moving from elsewhere within the city, so the employee contribution count, you know, won't change fundamentally, and so that really needs to be zeroed out as well. I think that's it for tonight, so thank you for my, thank you for letting me speak. Good night.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harrington.
RJ Harrington, four five seven East Rain Tree Court here in Lewisville. Most of our neighbors that have submitted written comment, um, as well as, uh, Jerry just submitted some very defined plat comments. Matt, myself, JoJo, we're a little bit more philosophical. And I know this is not a conversation, uh, not a back and forth between neighbors, although we are being told by our quote "neighbors" unquote, that they want to make this a beautiful plan, that they see this particular piece of property as something that's gonna benefit the community. Uh, I would suggest that there is no better exhibit than the last two pages of your packet, three hundred and fourteen, three hundred and fifteen, to demonstrate that these are not our neighbors. We have been visited by disaster capital immediately following the Marshall Fire. We've got some vulture capitalists circulating our community, hoping to pick off some of the bones after the fire. What we're witnessing here is gangster capital. These folks are coming in, they are showing slides about, uh, last year's approval. They're talking about how narrow the election was, to Matt's earlier point, it was a bloody landslide. They're not recognizing what their neighbors have been telling them for years. They're coming in, and they are throwing their millions upon millions of dollars around as if not only do they own this quote-unquote admittedly private property, but that they own this community. Is that right? That may not be a reason to recommend disapproval to city council, but it certainly belies what the applicant has been telling us again tonight about how strong a neighbor they are. Also recognize, not a single one of them has a City of Lewisville address, maybe a similar zip code across the way in Superior there, eight zero zero two seven, but that's as close as they come, except for their children attending our high school. Finally, even though this is not a back and forth conversation, I would like to hear a definition of the sign on the corner of the property closest to eighty-eighth and Campus Drive. Big giant triangular sign, now fading and dissipating, and it says, "Hope." What is a definition of hope? I hope that this plat does not get approved and does not include additional fossil infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Uh, why don't we, yeah, people here?
Sure. So next, we'll have Catherine Smith, and then on deck is Josh Cooperman.
Just want to set it on top. Does that work?
That works fine. Thanks.
Hi. I'm Catherine Smith again. I'm still at six oh eight West, or will be when the remediation is done in my home. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit today about the process and what the code actually does say. Um, I want to point out that in section sixteen twelve oh sixty, it says, "After the subdivider has received approval of the preliminary plat, the final plat may be prepared." To me, that says that you consider the preliminary plat. If you approve that, then you can go on to approve the final plat. But I don't think the code says you can do them simultaneously. With regard to the actions that you can take on a preliminary or a final plat, the code says, "In deciding whether to approve, approve with modifications, or deny a preliminary plat or final plat, the Planning Commission and the city council shall be guided by the following standards." Here, I'd like to focus on the approval with modifications, because I understand that it is the practice of the commission to approve with conditions, and I think that approving with conditions is something different than approving with modifications. To me, a modification is, if you were to say, "We will approve the proposed plat if you make these changes." Approving would be with a condition is, "We will approve the plat on the condition that you, for example, submit a traffic demand management plan to us." I don't read the code to allow you to permit approval with conditions, and I would ask that you consult with your council before you approve with conditions, if that is something you are inclined to do. As a citizen, I want to comment and say that I'm uncomfortable with gray, and I've been attending, uh, parks, open space, and now the Planning Commission meetings, and watching the proposals more. And I'm seeing that if the, uh, city bodies don't tie down the applicant in very clear terms, then the proposal starts to change, or people have different ideas about what was actually agreed to. So examples of things that I see is, I still don't know whether the forty-seven acres is going to be given to the City of Lewisville in fee simple, or whether it's a conservation easement, where the developer retains the legal rights to the property. I think these details are important. I hope you do, too, and that you will, um, in exercising your discretion, and as a body when you deliberate, ask the applicant to commit in writing to their sustainability commitment. I think that's very important. Um, similarly, I think we need to pin down what the heck is happening with those forty-seven acres. And when we're talking about the cut and fill, the question that comes to my mind if it's stored on the property is, where is it stored? What does that do to our air quality? What does it do to the habitat where it's stored? Like, what does this mean? I think we need to know. Um, I see that my time is up. I would ask that you indulge me if I could just summarize a few more points. Really quickly. Um, in looking at the code, my reading of the code is that retention ponds and other lands that are used for.
Sorry, is this summary?
Yes. This will be quick. Um, I urge you to look at sixteen sixteen point oh six oh C, because, um, it specifies that retention ponds can't count toward the public land dedication, and I think we just, we need to have discipline in this. There's a lot of numbers flying around, and I think it's important for the public that they be accurate. Um.
Thank you. That, 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 thank you.
Can I make one more request of you, please?
Quickly.
Yes. Um, to the extent that the applicant, um, provides additional documents, new information to the commission, I request that the public have an opportunity to comment only on the new information.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for indulging me.
Certainly. All right, the next speaker?
Okay.
If you begin with name and address.
Yeah. Um, I'm Josh Cooperman. I live at two sixteen Griffith Street in Lewisville. I'm not opposed to development at the Phillips sixty-six Rural Special, Special District. Uh, in fact, I think there are portions of it that would be ideal for redevelopment. And so I really wish that I could be here to provide positive comments about development on those portions, especially after the election in the spring, uh, but, uh, instead, I'm here to request that the Planning Commission not approve this subdivision plat. Generally speaking, I think that the current proposal is not sufficiently revised in light of the special election outcome, and still suffers from many of the same issues for which we voted down the previous plan, namely, traffic, um, and the large footprint of the development. Uh, more specifically, though, as I argued in my letter to the commission, uh, I think that there, the current proposal does not fully conform with Lewisville's municipal codes and plans, particularly those regarding subdivision plats. Uh, I'm not gonna go into the details there, they're in my letter, uh, but I do wish to note one thing that has not received very much attention, which is the special district policy number one in the comprehensive plan. It says that a special district's specific character expectations should be articulated and defined in a customized general development plan. It seems to me that is not what is going on. They're using an old general development plan, which was customized for a rather different development. Anyway, I recognize that the commissioners might disagree with my assessments regarding the codes. Uh, there is certainly some room for interpretation there. So, um, I'd like to make a couple of suggestions about improvements to the current plan. First of all, I think there should be a larger open space dedication, and the concomit, and coming with that, um, there should be a smaller development footprint, and I think some of my fellow citizens will speak to that point. Um, I also think that there should be a requirement for, to arrange public transportation to this site. Uh, it doesn't have to be all on the developer, because in fact, it would be really good if the transportation could also serve the CTC, Monarch, and Avista, which are currently not served whatsoever. I'd like to use my remaining time.
Make sure you're close to the microphone.
Sorry, sorry. Um, okay. So I'd like to use my remaining time, um, to offer a suggestion, uh, for how to, I think, vastly improve Redtail Ridge. Uh, so as the commissioners, or most of them, uh, no doubt, know by now, environmental sustainability is really my primary concern, as I think it should be for all of us. Um, and so I, while I really appreciate that the developer has come back with the same sustainability commitments, uh, from the previous iteration, uh, I'd like to say that sustainability is not just about how you build buildings. It's not just about making a good building or covering them with solar panels, right? The current proposed development lacks in sustainability, because it's an isolated campus to which everyone must drive. That type of development is simply not sustainable. Now, this is not entirely the developer's fault. Um, you know, the comprehensive plan says that we can't put any housing there, and that's the problem. We should, we should allow or even demand residential development at Redtail Ridge. Then people can live where they actually work, work where they actually live, they can bike and walk, and we can substantially reduce the amount of traffic, which the public transportation would help with a lot, too. Moreover, I think this could be the single biggest opportunity for affordable housing in the city ever, and if you were at the council meeting last night, even though the ordinance failed, there was tremendous support for affordable housing, and I think this is a perfect place to do some of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Online?
Online? You bet. Next up, we have Cynthia Korn.
Good evening, commissioners. Cynthia Korn, four thirty-eight Jefferson Avenue, Lewisville. Um, I, I did submit, uh, quite a few document, uh, an email with quite a few notes related to the code. What I'd like to talk about, um, is the two thousand ten PUD and industrial uses, and I'd like to build on what, um, Catherine said about specificity, and, um, with respect to Jeff Boffel and Jay Hardy, we need specifics around the industrial uses, and I would ask the commission to please ask staff to go back in the notes for the two thousand ten PUD, where either the council excluded industrial use from that PUD. If you look at the table, so just because the GDP allowed it, they specifically excluded industrial uses. And that's in a back and forth email exchange correcting some minutes and saying, before it goes on the record, please make sure it indicates that industrial uses were excluded. So, a lot of work has been done by our own city staff to figure out ways to let this developer do what they want. Now, being clear, I am thrilled at the idea of Avista. From day one, I've said how wonderful it'll be to drive from Denver and see Avista there. And one of the things, um, is this parcel is the entrance to the world for people going to Rocky Mountain National Park, for coming into Boulder County, which has one of the most sustainable, um, visions since the seventies, and Lewisville still has a small-town character. So, the other p, point, so that is a really important point, the specific uses, they're asking us to pave it over. How about some creative, do, I guess, sustainable pavement to, you know, the, the whole sustainability needs to be better than saying, "We'll approve parking lots." I spoke.
What I'd like to talk about is the 2010 PUD and industrial uses. And I'd like to build on what Catherine said about specificity. And with respect to Jeff Bockel and Jay Hardy, we need specifics around the industrial uses. And I would ask the commission to please ask staff to go back in the notes for the 2010 PUD, where either the council excluded industrial use from that PUD. If you look at the table, so just because the GDP allowed it, they specifically excluded industrial uses. And that's in a back-and-forth email exchange correcting some minutes and saying before it goes on the record, please make sure it indicates that industrial uses were excluded. So a lot of work has been done by our own city staff to figure out ways to let this developer do what they want. Now, being clear, I am thrilled at the idea of Avista. From day one, I've said how wonderful it'll be to drive from Denver and see Avista there. And one of the things is this parcel is the entrance to the world for people going to Rocky Mountain National Park, for coming into Boulder County, which has one of the most sustainable visions since the 70s. And Lewisville still has a small-town character. So the other point, so that is a really important point, the specific uses. They're asking us to pave it over. How about some creative, I guess, sustainable pavement to, you know, the whole sustainability needs to be better than saying we'll approve parking lots. I spoke to them, to Brubachel, after the parks meeting or the OSAB meeting and asked why there's four-lane roads. Do you realize the CTC does not have four-lane roads after 20 years? Also, how is traffic, how is construction traffic going to be managed without creating chaos? Is there a construction traffic plan? So how should, we should not allow the developer to shrug his shoulders this evening and say, I don't know what the industrial uses are on this important land. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
So next up in the room, we'll have Sherri Summer and then Joy Brook on deck.
Good evening, commissioners. After countless hours of staff, resident, and board and commission time, a referendum petition, and a special election which cost our city $80,000, we are now reviewing a proposal which has foundational documents that we have seen before. The drainage plan, the grading plan, the traffic study, the sewer lift station, and the plat, which is virtually the same, we've all seen those before. So the plan, to your point, Commissioner Osterman, the plat that we first saw, which would allow for a development of 6.1 billion square feet, we are now seeing the very same plat, same grading. And as commissioners, you well know that people come back, developers, investors come back, time after time after time for more investments. This land is open for, this is just the found, this is just the beginning. We can, they, there can be many more allowances that will allow development to go to many more square feet from this. The applicant has claimed to listen to our community countless times over the three years, but those are just words. And I want to make very clear that our group, Citizens for a Vibrant Sustainable Lewisville, is committed to the code. We don't feel entitled because we won an incredibly tough election. That is the gold standard, and we are committed to it. In a decision of this magnitude, every applicable section of the code must be applied impartially. And so much has come to light. We've talked about the grading, since that's all been discovered since the election. We talked about the drainage. At this point, the way I would describe the northeast entrance of the property, which is supposed to be open space, I'd call that the entrance to an office park. And that's what we're supposed to accept as open space. The area named Park, we heard in the Park meeting, is not going to be a park because it's too hilly to be graded. And we've been led to believe that that will be a park. I'm fine with open space, but it's just deceptive. Our planning department has recommended approval, and I say, let's look at this again. I don't see how this can be recommended. This proposal is in major violation of so much of subdivisions, codes, Section 16 of our code. There are too many issues with this proposal to be approved. Some proposals can be approved conditionally, some can be modified, but this must just be denied. And I want to say about the final plat, which has been submitted, it can't be approved. It can't be looked at now because there, all the documents haven't been submitted. According to our code, all the documents have to be submitted for the final plat 21 days before you can hear this. There are requirements for federal permitting. One is being reviewed by the EPA for the U.S. Clean Waters Act. There is, they have not, I don't see any information about looking into the permit from the Army Corps of Engineers for the Good Hugh Ditch, for it's a historic site. We don't have an agreement with the Northwest Parkway. We don't have an appraisal. I just simply want to say, please deny this plan and realize the final plat cannot be reviewed at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then who's on deck after?
Excuse me. On deck, we'll have Tim Stalker.
My name's Joy Brook, and I live at 1590 Garfield Avenue. And I moved here to have clean air, not to have to have an air conditioner. The air pollution here has forced me to put in an air conditioner. It's forced my neighbors to do the same. We need to do things to take care of our city, not to destroy it. I hope that you listen to the committee, the community, and take time for us to get a real plan. This is a vague bunch of promises that is not written down. Traffic is horrible. Nobody has talked tonight about 36 in the Parkway Exchange failing within five years, as well as the Parkway heading for an F rating. We talked about that last month. That's a big deal for our mobility, especially for somebody who suffered trauma from being stuck in traffic when I was trying to escape from the fire. And then to have a fire department not even be able to get in and out. I mean, the traffic situation we're setting ourselves up for is a nightmare. We haven't talked about the sewer system. What about the cost to that? What about water? We didn't have enough water to fight the fire. Where are we going to get the water for all this? Is there any plan for that? Is that just going to come back on the city and the citizens to fund? And flooding? I understand that two of the underpasses only go to 10-year flooding, and that we need three underpasses. The environmental impact, what about the wildlife? How is there going to be any food for raptors if everything has been plowed over? And the trees? The maximum slope and total scrape is totally not acceptable. Restored is not left in the natural state. That doesn't apply to our code. Trees should not be destroyed. They need to be left in their natural state. The parks and rec board approval was premature and ill-informed. They did not talk about any of the issues that citizens brought up. We need legal requirements with this developer, not vague promises. The subdivision improvement plan needs to be done now, not later. We need to look at that, not wait for the city council. This is not a final document. It's not even a preliminary document. Their vision is five-story buildings, if you notice that. And it did not look like a small-town character of Lewisville, which is what we want. The extension of Campus Drive, in my understanding, is required by the GDP, and they're making it sound like it's something that they're doing. Somebody else talked about all the empty buildings in town. That just shows that we don't need this development. And this plan that is before you is not a plan. It needs to be sent back and denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
And service, and protecting our environment.
Thank you for my time to speak. I only have a, we'll try to be coherent.
Name and address.
A couple of answers to some questions that came up earlier.
Can we start with name and address, please?
Oh, Tim Stalker. I live at 806 West Dahlia Court, Lewisville. Just a couple of questions, one of which I'm very interested in knowing as well, is how 250,000 cubic yards of soil will be stored on site? That's the equivalent of 20,833 dump truck loads. Is that going to be stored by not cutting it? Or stored by cutting it and moving it around site with excavators? You need to ask questions much more in detail about that specific question. Another question that came up, I think, part of the problem is the footprint is expressed in acreage, and the build-out is expressed in square feet. Essentially, what you're looking at is a 14.19 million square foot footprint to build 3.55 million square feet. That is the breadth of the site without the public land dedication, 63 acres. That might help you understand that a bit. Onto my point. I don't know how, in city code, you're allowed to even look at 47 acres that are outside of the plat. That shouldn't even be in your minds. You need to jettison that. It's a good gesture by, on the part of the developer, but legally, you can't include that in the plat review and your decision. The city evaluated the public land dedication, city staff, and they come up with 69.3 acres within the plat. You need to look at that in the sense that the city staff looked at tracks A, B, H, and I only, not track C. There's no evaluation of track C and/or D, really. Track C is the one that's very contentious. There's a number of things going on in that tract. Easement access, drainage grading and development, buffer zone per Boulder County, road ray grading and slope, as well as trying to fit in a public dedication and a trail system through there, right? Sections, track C is also highly contentious and questionable because of the drainage. The drainage plan has been based on some outdated FEMA insurance adjustment rate maps from 2012. Those have just recently come back in the news for being woefully outdated because of the 1,000-year floods that have happened this summer in the country. You need to evaluate whether or not the drainage plan could be adjusted with more recent mapping. The other thing is, the underpasses under Campus Drive are only built to 10-year flood requirements. We've had two 100-year floods in the past six weeks in Lewisville. That's an amount of rain over two inches. According to the developer's drainage plan, that's 2.69 inches of rain in one hour. We've had two of those rainy events in six weeks. A 10-year-built underpass would wash out with an updated coefficient flow from concrete into that lowest area of the site, track C. So I encourage you to look at the public land dedication by taking out track C, and you're looking at about-
You have to note time.
22.4% of, the real, the real number is 50.77 acres, 16.4%. All of my notes and narrative that are much more coherent than I am now are in your packets, both addendum 1 and addendum 2. I encourage you to take a look at that, get further information from the developer.
Thank you.
We have one final card for Cindy Bedell.
Does it look like there's anybody else online?
No hands raised at this time.
Oh, hi. I'm Cindy Bedell. I live at 662 West Willow Street, and I'll try to highlight some of what I sent you by email. You are tasked with making a recommendation about the fate of this land, which constitutes about 8% of the land area in the city of Lewisville. This land is full of natural features, previously undeveloped greenfields, which constitute our visual buffer and entrance to Lewisville's southeast gateway. You have an opportunity and a moral obligation to make a recommendation to save more of this area for open space. Tonight, Director Zakaro calculated 69 acres of open space within the Lewisville boundary, which is significantly lower than the number the applicant gave in their presentation. Is 69 acres really the second-largest public land dedication in Lewisville history? Municipal Code 16.16.060 states, "The planning commission and city council will consider the size of the development, the existing parks and other public uses in the area, the needs of the people in the area, and any other appropriate factors." During the August 11th Planning Commission meeting, the question arose, if we can take into account the results of the recent election, where citizens of Lewisville overturned city council's approval of the Redtail Ridge master plan, ordinance 1811. The main reason most referendum petition signatories gave for signing the referendum was they want more open space at this location. Therefore, under 16.16.060, the results of the election are relevant to your decision tonight, under the needs of the people and any other appropriate factors. Also, many residents stated, "We specifically need more open space in this area, and as we would be creating thousands more visitors and employees." I think tonight, the statement of 4,800 employees, just for storage tech, was listed, and there's going to be a lot more for this. Also, I just want to remind you that, take into consideration, when the applicant says the open space board approved this, they, they didn't seem to understand that Director Zakaro in the May meeting said, "Under 16.16.010, there's two areas, D, natural features, historical and archaeological sites, and vegetation, including trees, must be preserved, and the need for additional open space park and rec areas can be based on certain factors, which you have," because I'm running out of time. So however, in June, Open Space Advisory Board, many members said they couldn't recommend more open space, and they voted to approve this. So that was a faulty review process, so please take that into consideration, and I'm out of time. The final thing I want to say, though, is that 47.4 acres is outside the city of Lewisville. It shouldn't be counted in the total public land dedication. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So just looking around again, it looks like online world is clear of any raised hands. I believe we've addressed everybody in the room that wanted to speak, has been able to speak. All right. With that, then, procedurally, because it's a little after 9:15 at this point in time, I would, we can have a quick discussion, but not about the contents of it. I think I would propose that we would continue it to September 22nd, but we can just, so if we can discuss that with the commissioners, if that works for you all.
Yeah, I'm open to a continuance. As I had mentioned before, it would be good to have the subdivision agreement drafted, to have the sustainability commitments integrated into that document at a sufficient level of detail that we can, we can analyze those and understand exactly what you guys are committing to.
Okay. Any other thoughts in continuing it?
Are we adding additional information that we'd like between now and the continued meeting?
We can, I think we've hinted at any number of things along the way. So public comment will still be open if there's anything substantial that is submitted by the applicant. And so, you can, yep.
So the notes I have are documentation to meet the requirement for the information on natural features and that section that Commissioner Krantz mentioned. So we need documentation on that, as well as specific documentation on the sustainability commitments that could then be incorporated into the subdivision improvement agreement. So it's very clear what's being committed to. Those are the two things. If there's any other information, it would be good to know.
Yeah. Could we get the Habitat Management Plan and the Biological and Cultural Resources Study?
Yes.
And could we get a copy of the applicant's presentation?
From this evening?
Yes.
And Director Zakaro, have there been any new developments in the traffic agreements?
With, are you talking about BVSD or?
I think the metro, there were some agreements that have not been cemented with this, with the east-west and the connections.
I guess I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
Okay. I'll look into that, and I'll be more specific.
Okay.
Mr. Moline?
Yeah, I have one, Director Zakaro, and that is, it sounds like the transportation management plan is getting close, or there's a draft. That, that, that would be, yeah, can you comment about that?
Right. So there's, there's two documents that are in the record right now, and that we've recommended, we've suggested a condition that a more specific plan be submitted before city council. If the applicant's working on an updated plan, I think you could maybe ask them if they'll have it ready for the continuance date. I'm not sure.
If it's to reach them now, I mean, yeah, that should be a couple of days.
Right. And I don't know how far along it is. So it looks like it wouldn't be ready for that final level of detail within two weeks. So, you know, we could provide what we have-
Okay.
And then- And then, you know, provide something at the hearing, if not in the packet potentially, but we could work, we'll get everything we can before the next meeting.
Thanks.
Yeah, as much in the packet as possible.
Yeah.
And just knowing, right, that it may cause us to continue again if the level of information isn't available, and we're not comfortable with it at that point in time, so it could be a stumbling block. Commissioner Krantz?
And a couple of things that came up during public comments that I think would be really useful to add to the staff analysis would be an economic, more, more information on the economic impacts of the project, like how this will affect traffic and housing and vacant properties in Louisville. That was one of the things that, if we could add that to the staff analysis, and then also more analysis on how this meets the, how this complies with the 2010 GDP. Is that something that we could add to the analysis?
Yes, and I think if you, if you reference back to the August memo, we do analysis of
Oh, I thought that was really brief. I didn't realize that that was the, the kind of analysis.
Well, I think if you're, so I think if you feel like we're missing something specific, I'd appreciate more specific feedback on what you're looking for. I think the commission can also analyze against the GDP. There's not, the documents are, there is a GDP document, it's a one-page document, and then there's the PCZD agreement. I think staff found that the proposed plat is in compliance, so I'm not sure if the commission thinks there is a contradiction or something is missing. We're happy to try to address that, but I'm not quite sure I could provide more without more feedback or a more specific question. In relation to the economic impacts, I'm not quite sure what to provide on that from economic impacts related to the proposal. It is, it's, you know, it's a plat proposal in compliance with the GDP, so there are, you know, there, they have an allowance for uses and densities, and this plat is to create developable lots in compliance with that. So, I mean, I guess I'm going to ask for maybe some more information on what you're looking for specifically in relation to this application?
Yeah, I guess I would ask if we could analyze a couple of specific code sections, but we can bring that up in our discussion, or I can list those codes.
I mean, if you know the code section, it might be helpful.
Yeah, 17.72.030, and then the Planned Community Zone District Zoning Agreement, just how that complies with that, that's just in general. Let me say, planned, I'm sorry, under that Planned Community Zone District Zoning Agreement, the general development plan, 3.3 permitted uses, 17.72.050, 17.72.060, 17.72.160, 17.72.170,
Okay, so those are all referencing to criteria for general development plans, and we're not reviewing a general development?
Right, I understand that, but I feel like the purpose of a general development plan is really relevant to understanding whether or not a subdivision plat complies with the purposes of the general development plan. I can save that for discussion, but I wanted to bring those up because I thought that that would be useful in the analysis, and it would be a lot for me to discuss during the meeting. It would be good to have it in writing.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll look into it and see what
Could I submit something to everybody in writing, or is that kind of frowned upon?
We usually don't do that. It's better for you to bring, to deliberate.
Okay.
So, you're not doing, you know, your research, you know, you should be considering the evidence presented
Ah, okay.
In the hearing, and then deliberating here. So, yeah, we can take, staff can take that under advisement. I think I've heard you want to see if there's any relevant staff analysis based on those code sections
Yes, please.
That we could provide, you know, related to uses. Again, I want to say that the uses are set under the 2010 GDP. The plat doesn't allow or disallow specific uses. Those are set within the use table under the GDP, and those are administered through the building permit and PUD process when that happens. So, just trying to get ahead of that, you know, you know, we can't spec, you know, we can't really speculate what would be allowed or not allowed. It's clearly stated in the GDP what's allowed and is not allowed. You know, if you have questions about how that might be interpreted, we could maybe talk about that.
Yes, yes.
So, if you have questions about how that might be interpreted, again, it would be a little bit of speculation, but if we feel like it's a clear, we can make a clear determination, we could try that.
Commissioner Howe? I do have some more information about those traffic agreements, and I understand that a lot of these could be conditions for approval for the City Council, but if there's any new developments, that may be helpful to our deliberation. It says, "Prior to reaching full build-out expansions would be needed at the Northwest Parkway and U.S. 36 interchange." That this interchange would fail in 2040 with background traffic alone, so if there's any update on those interchanges, that would be helpful, or any, any additional study that's been done there. Secondly, it says that implementation of the transportation improvements requires acquisition of right-of-way from Boulder Valley School District for the expansion of Campus Drive. So, you've coordinated with representatives from BVSD to determine the appropriate configuration, and if you can provide a resolution in support of this, I don't know if there's been any additional, but that would be helpful. And then, you've yet to receive a support letter from the Northwest Parkway Authority related to the right-of-way acquisition requirement, so I guess if there's any new progress made on that, that would be, that would be wonderful to hear.
Yep, that makes sense. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to continue.
So, moved. Second.
I think we'll do a roll call on this one.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Due September 22nd.
Thank you.
2022.
At 6:30 PM.
At 6:30 PM, yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Chair Brownice?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Look forward to continuing. With that, then, we'll move to see if anybody has a planning commission comments, if not that, staff comments.
I don't think we have anything else this evening. Thank you.
All right, I see we have a few potential issues for October meeting.
Yes, yep.
But then, we motion to adjourn.
So, moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all, thank you all for coming out.